Okay, I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Meeting of Tuesday, October 18th. We're very, very lucky and proud to have sing the National Anthem tonight, the St. John the Baptist Clover Choir, which has performed all over the world, and including most recently, they were just at Heroes Hall, but they've been all over the world and they're a award-winning choir. So please stand, and when they're done with the National Anthem, together we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One more time for the St. John the Baptist Clover Choir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Itano. It's beautiful as always. Thank you. Thank you, parents. Okay, now it's time for our moment of solemn expression, and we're fortunate to be led in our moment of solemn expression by Dr. George Okusi from the St. John the Divine Episcopal Church. Reverend Okusi, you have the floor.
Time to pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we are gathered here, only one, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, to ask for your blessing on the people who have been called to lead this community of Costa Mesa, in which we live, which we work, and play. Help our leaders and community members standing before you to listen, to observe, and to learn from each other. Good Lord, remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. This evening, no matter where we leave, everyone is our neighbor, everyone is our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers or immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Loving God, protect our police department, men and women, energize our fire department, let our hospitals and let everybody, especially places of help, show compassion and love. Grant our council leadership the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. We hope that what some leaders did in the city of Los Angeles will not happen here and should not even happen. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully. When it is time to listen, may we always be guided by the Spirit of community, justice, and love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, and we all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Harland?
Here.
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Potemmar?
Here.
Mayor Stevens?
Here.
And the record would reflect that Councilmembers Gamarros and Harper are absent.
Okay, this is for the City Attorney Closed Session Report. Ms. Barlow, do you have any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening. Direction was given to staff.
Excellent. Okay. So we have four presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation for Walktober Month, and this proclamation was brought forward by a council member from District 5, Arliss Reynolds, who has worked on so many projects pertaining to street safety and bike safety and pedestrian safety. So I'm going to turn over the floor to Councilmember Reynolds to run us through this first presentation.
Okay. It's Walktober Month in Costa Mesa. October is a perfect month to get outside and enjoy a walk with your friends and family. The cooler temperatures make it ideal to be active by getting outside and adding walking to your daily routine. Walking helps with our mental and physical health. It helps us connect with nature in our community. Walktober Month is a month to take action. On October 5th and October 12th, 13 Newport Mesa Elementary Schools participated in the Walk to School event. This year's Walk to School event included 1,800 childrens, parents, and faculty who participated with council members, Active Transportation Committee members, see some out there, Public Works staff, the Costa Mesa Police Department, and members from the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. The city's Transportation Services Division has been active all year in creating safer routes for walking by developing a local road safety plan, making modifications to signal timing to give pedestrians a head start when crossing streets. We've planted new trees citywide to increase shade for pedestrians. We've upgraded and added sidewalks and curb ramps, and we're just getting started. So we want to invite our Active Transportation Coordinator Brett Attencio Thomas to the podium. And am I supposed to go down there and read, or do I read from here? I read from here. Okay, so here's the proclamation. The city of Costa Mesa promotes walking and movement. The Costa Mesa City Council has adopted advanced environmental, adopted and advanced environmental sustainability and climate resilience as a goal and objective, which includes a pedestrian master plan. The city hosted several Walk to School events throughout Costa Mesa with hundreds of students participating to raise awareness of the need to create safer routes for walking and biking and to emphasize the importance of physical activity, pedestrian safety, and concern for the environment. I encourage our residents to rededicate themselves to enjoy the benefits of walking and ensuring the safety of pedestrians in our community. Now do we go down?
Okay.
Oh, so I think Brett Attencio Thomas will give us some words. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and honorable council members. You know, Costa Mesa is a city with a long history of walkability. It has unique commercial corridors surrounded by an eclectic mix of residential neighborhoods. Almost every place in the community, every place in the city, is within a short walk to all the necessities that would generally require the use of an automobile in most communities in Orange County. In Costa Mesa, you can literally walk to get your vacuum repaired. You could walk to get pictures framed. You can walk to almost all daily chores. And of course, all of the amazing restaurants and retail opportunities that are within a close walk of our communities. Programs like Walk to School Day are a perfect example of the groundswell of community support and community enthusiasm for walking in Costa Mesa. I want to personally thank the City Council for its continued embrace of walkability and support of projects and programs to expand the comfort and safety of people walking in the city of Costa Mesa. I also want to thank Rajah Setharaman and Jennifer Brazales and Sung Yang and our amazing public works staff for all that they do to make walking more useful in Costa Mesa and all the projects that they work on surrounding pedestrian infrastructure in the community. I also want to take a second to thank the Costa Mesa PD for their continued support of our programs and for their specific support of our Walk to School Day programs, as well as the army of community volunteers out there that work so diligently to get the word out on walking in Costa Mesa and make events like Walk to School Day possible. Thank you very much.
All right, now we'll take our photo. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Councilmember Reynolds. Great job. So our next proclamation is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Every October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. According to the CDC, we live in a world where 1 in 4 women, as well as 1 in 7 men, are victims of domestic violence. This month is a crucial time to acknowledge those lost to abuse, celebrate survivors, and raise awareness for change. For the last 40 years, Human Options, a nonprofit organization, has been at the forefront of a collection, sorry, a collective countywide response to those threatened by abuse in Orange County. Human Options is committed to a future in which every person and family in Orange County experiences safe, healthy relationships, and lives free from fear. Joining us tonight is Prevention, Education, and Marketing Manager, Arezu Shabazi Roa. And if you could please come to the front, and then I'm going to read a little bit from the proclamation that we're going to present to you, and then if you could say a few words, including promoting the event that's coming up.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, so this is an excerpt from the proclamation that we're going to present. Domestic violence is a serious and pervasive crime affecting countless of Americans. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. All survivors deserve access to responsive programs and services to increase their safety and self-sufficiency. Costa Mesa residents are united and offering support during this month-long observance to the survivors of domestic violence and the work of public and private entities striving to provide them with the best possible services while sending a clear message to abusers that such crimes will never be tolerated. I urge Costa Mesa residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community. Now, Ms. Shabazi Roa, you've got the floor to speak and promote the event that's coming up.
Great. Thank you so much. First of all, a huge thank you to the city of Costa Mesa for your support year after year, and not only bringing awareness through your proclamations, but really standing with us all month long in various ways. Also, a huge shout out to the police department as well, who also stand alongside with us year after year, and it goes such a long way for the victims and families that we're serving. We serve families in all different states and all different situations based on them having to flee their situation to those that are even wanting to stay safe in their situation. And so we have programs for all different individuals and families all throughout the county, but we also serve families through our Newport Mesa Family Resource Center, just to share that. It's a tremendous resource to the community. Next week, we're excited to partner with not only the city, but also the police department for our Shine the Light event. It's a walking vigil that's going to be hosted right here in Costa Mesa in the Lions Park on the event lawn on the 25th from 6:00 to 7:30. It's an opportunity for us to literally shine the light together with lights, talking about the issue and a cause, breaking the silence, making sure that it's an issue that everybody talks about because we know it affects everybody and it doesn't discriminate. And so the more that we break the silence, the earlier we can get in front of it and hopefully break the cycle together as a community. So for more information, please feel free to check out our website, our social for information about the Shine the Light walking vigil. So again, thank you so much for your support.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's do a photo. Okay, our next proclamation is for Crime Prevention Month. October is National Crime Prevention Month. The vitality of our city depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, and communities. During this time, the National Crime Prevention Council asks us to join the commitment to take a bite out of crime. People of all ages must be made aware of what they can do to prevent themselves, their families, and their neighbors from being harmed by crime. Residents in the Costa Mesa, sorry, residents and the Costa Mesa Police Department work together to establish neighborhood watch programs. There are currently 31 neighborhood watch programs around the city to help reduce crime in their neighborhoods. With us tonight is Captain Bakula, Public Affairs Manager and Crime Prevention Specialist, Public Affairs Manager Roxy Fayad, and Crime Prevention Specialist Jeanette Martinez. So they're going to come up and say a few words, and while they're coming up, I'll read from the proclamation that we're going to present. This is just an excerpt from the proclamation. Crime destroys our trust in others and in civic institutions, threatening the community health, prosperity, and quality of life. Successful crime prevention involves more than vigilance and caution. The Costa Mesa Police Department partners with residents in meaningful ways by promoting and hosting community events such as Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, and Christmas Shop with a Cop. The Costa Mesa Police Department hosts Citizens Police and Teen Academy. They also staff a community policing unit with a bike patrol detail that engages in community outreach to residents in need of resources and a gang unit with two school resource officers who conduct youth-specific outreach events to bridge gaps between at-risk youth and law enforcement. Effective crime prevention programs succeed through partnerships with law enforcement, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith-based communities, businesses, and individuals as they help to nurture communal responsibility and instill pride. I urge all residents to invest in the power of prevention and work together to make the city of Costa Mesa a safer, stronger, and more caring community. Captain Bakula, you have the floor.
Am I on?
You're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I just want to, we are so thrilled to have a full-time crime prevention specialist in the city of Costa Mesa. She works with businesses and citizens to make our city a safer place 24 hours a day. Her neighborhood watch programs have expanded vastly since she's come on board, and I urge anybody that wants to start a neighborhood watch program or have her come out and look at your business, or residents even, to make sure it's safe, to dial 714-754-4876. That's her direct number, and Jeanette will get ahold of you. Thank you very much, and we look forward to a healthy and happy holiday season.
Okay, let's go. All right, let's do a photo. Okay, for our fourth and final presentation, we call up Townsend Public Affairs for an update on legislation. Townsend Public Affairs does great work for us in the city of Costa Mesa, keeping up on legislation and making sure that we're well represented in Sacramento and in Washington. So I'm calling up, please, hi Sean, Sean McReynolds from Townsend Public Affairs. He's going to give us an update on some important legislation that we're following, and he's helping us advocate. He also helps us advocate things with the, you know, all things that we have to do, like Fairview Medical Center. Townsend Public Affairs was very instrumental in that. Anything we have to negotiate with Sacramento, they're there for us. So we really appreciate the partnership and the work that you do. So you have the floor, Mr. McReynolds.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Update away.
Okay, we'll do. Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Sean McReynolds with Townsend Public Affairs. Great to be with you this evening. I have for you just a brief state legislative update highlighting a couple of housing bills that I think will be impactful for the city and all cities in California in 2023. So I'll just go ahead and jump right into it. Just a quick update from Sacramento in 2022. The legislative session ended on the 31st of August, and the governor acted on all the bills that had passed the legislature and were on his desk by September 30th. Just a quick breakdown of the bills that were introduced this year, just over 2,000, which is getting back to the norm for the number of bills that are introduced in Sacramento each year. The legislature passed of that 2,000 roughly approximately 1,200 bills excluding resolutions and constitutional amendments. And of those bills, the governor signed 997 and vetoed 169, which was actually a higher veto rate than we see typically from the governor. We're also obviously expecting a new legislature, new district lines. I'm going to talk a little bit about that towards the end of the presentation, but let me move forward here into the state budget provisions, which I wanted to highlight for you. Obviously, a historic year in terms of the number of programs that were funded, the dollar amount, the revenue numbers, expenditures, over $300 billion in total spending with nearly $100 billion of surplus funding, with roughly half of that available for discretionary use for either one-time programs or multi-year programs. And among those, obviously, healthcare expansion was a big focus of both the administration and the legislature this year, with Medi-Cal expansion being expanded for undocumented immigrants, certain populations, which will be rolling out in the coming 18 months or so. $9.5 billion for inflation relief rebate, which was actually, is in the process of going out to individuals who qualify for those rebates, as well as a $2 billion investment for housing as well, just to help to finance some lower-income housing projects throughout the state. And the state was obviously very focused on shoring up its reserves in terms of its rainy day fund for economic downturns that we may see here in the next year or two. And then, of course, a historic $19 billion climate package, which passed as part of the budget this year as well, highlighting that for you this evening. I did want to highlight a couple of successes that we were very proud to work with the city on, specifically this $11.2 million for various city park projects that we worked closely with Senator Min and Assemblymember Petri Norris to secure that funding, really just a top-notch effort from staff, council, engagement, and very proud of bringing that funding to the city of Costa Mesa. And as you mentioned, Mayor, $3.5 million to the city as well for FDC. Last month, the governor announced the 2022 State Housing Package, which was really a combination of administrative changes to allow for funding for low-income housing projects, as well as a bill package of approximately 41 bills, all with the main focus of promoting the governor's housing focus primarily on housing production, housing affordability, creating jobs, and increasing density around transit-oriented districts. The two bills that I wanted to just highlight for you this evening is AB 2011 by Assemblymember Wicks, who was the new Housing Committee Chair for this year, really creating a streamlined approval process for affordable housing projects that have to be 100% affordable in certain commercial zones, as well as mixed-income housing projects along commercial corridors. I'm going to get into the meat and the potatoes of this bill on the next slide, but I'm just highlighting these here for you from a high level, as well as SB 6 by Senator Capiero, which really allows for the use of housing on any parcel zoned for office or retail uses as long as developers use a certain number of criteria, including a skilled and trained workforce. Both of those bills have been signed and will Again, I mentioned a streamlined approval process, but we're looking at 150 units as being required to have approval within 90 days and 180 days for projects with more than 150 units. For location, office, retail, or parking are really kind of the focus of both of these bills. There are certain restrictions for AB 2011, specifically in industrial areas and in any fire severity zones, tribal areas. There are also a number of exclusions, including the SB 35 exclusions, which include wetlands and other environmentally sensitive areas. Those areas would be excluded from this bill. Mobile home parks, you can't be within 500 feet of a freeway, or within 0.6 miles of an active oil or gas refinery. And along the project criteria front, the proponents must complete an environmental assessment prior to going underway, as well as providing notices and relocation assistance for certain independently-owned commercial tenants in those specific areas. You have to qualify for that, but that must be done on behalf of the proponents, as well as a multifamily requirement, multifamily projects with five or more homes, either for sale or for rent. And then finally, a sort of, along the affordability front, again, I kind of mentioned the affordability requirements with this bill. In the commercial zones, we're talking about 100% affordable projects versus the commercial corridors, which I mentioned. You've got to have a combination there of either 8% very low income plus 5% extremely low income, or 15% dedicated for lower-income projects, as well as owner-occupied, that's under just specifically the rentals. On the owner-occupied side, there's a 30% moderate income or 15% lower income. And again, I'm listing all these here, they're specific, but again, just to highlight these here for you so you have a sense of, you know, what will be, you know, potentially impacting the city again in 2023. There are some labor standards that were included in this bill as well, including a prevailing wage standard, as well as a requirement for apprenticeship for projects that propose 50 or more units. And along the commercial zones for development, there's a density, low-income density requirement, as well as zoning, any zoning requirements that are in place if that parcel currently allows residential uses. Along the commercial corridors, there are height and setback requirements that get determined based on a variety of factors such as location and a variety of other factors. So I'm happy to provide some additional details for you if you've got questions at the end as well. SB 6, just very quickly, is a little bit different. It takes a different take to residential development on commercial properties or commercially zones. It allows for residential development versus having a streamlined approval process in place. There is no ministerial approval process and no rezoning required. There's also no affordability requirements for these types of projects, and the city does have discretion over these types of projects, as opposed to AB 2011. The approval process, again, there'd be no streamlining of a process. You would go through your typical process that you would go through for any other development project, including, you know, there would have to be local ordinances, parking and design notices, local permitting requirements that would all need to be taken into account before approving a project like this. Again, retail, office, parking is the focus of these two bills, and in the case of SB 6 specifically, that parcel has to be less than 20 acres. The criteria specifically for mixed-use development has to have at least half of that square footage be dedicated to housing specifically, and similar to 2011, the proponents have to provide notices and relocation assistance for independently-owned tenants there in those commercial areas. On the labor side, a little bit different, a prevailing wage requirement, but in addition to that, you've got a skilled and trained workforce requirement, with the exception being made if there are less than two bids for a particular project. And finally, on the development requirements, you have to account for lower-income density as well as the local ordinances, parking, design, and all the things I mentioned before that. So with that, just very briefly, on the 2023 session and how this might sort of impact housing policy specifically moving forward, we're entering a new two-year session with a 25% projected turnover rate in the legislature, new lines, obviously, at the Assembly, Senate, and the congressional levels. And I think we might see a potential change in the budget reserves, which may potentially impact the availability of funding for the city for member-sponsored projects like we pursued in the past. And I think that we may potentially see a change in leadership, specifically in the Assembly. So again, you know, from the state's perspective, a continued focus on behavioral health, housing production, and also we'll be seeing a fall or winter special session to address energy prices. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you very much. So council, do you have any questions of Mr. McReynolds? Anybody? Councilmember Reynolds.
Thank you for the presentation. Just one question, the two bills that you described, AB 2011 and SB 6, when are those effective?
July 1, 23.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. As always, I appreciate your detail. On the housing bills, your last slide, you seem to suggest that we're going to see a lot more of this. Do you have a sense of what issues did not survive the legislature this last year that we might expect in the coming two-year session?
I think, generally speaking, you know, the state and this administration, I think, is really focused on climate change, climate adaptation. We're seeing pretty historic resources being put towards those types of initiatives. I would imagine that tax reform is also going to be something that would be coming forward as well. The governor's already indicated that tax on oil companies to help drive down energy prices is going to be a focus this next month, the next two months, and especially into '23. And housing, absolutely. I think the administration is really focused on trying to meet the lack of housing supply throughout the state. So I would imagine that those three things will be top of mind for the legislature and for the governor.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protan.
Oh, gosh, I'll ask since no one else will. So the two housing bills that you describe, if the city has an existing ordinance on the books that specifically prohibits the exact kind of development that's listed, what is the city to do?
That's a great question. I mean, under 2011 specifically, which is really kind of the bill that removes cities' ability to have its discretion, you know, if a project is proposed in a certain area, you know, if it meets all of the statutory requirements now in state statute, it would qualify under this streamlined approved process. So, yeah, that's the extent I think that the city would have some oversight. Obviously, you have to comply with the requirements of approving these projects within the timelines described, and, yeah, it's going to be difficult, I think, for a lot of cities, I'll say, and we're hopeful that HCD will offer some guidance in terms of how to implement these provisions moving forward, but there's certainly no requirement to do so.
Okay. Anybody, well, let me just ask. So let's say hypothetically, a city has a requirement for a vote of the people on certain projects, but they fall within one of those pieces of legislation. Under that hypothetical city, would there be a vote of the people or no?
Yeah, I'm looking over at council.
Mr. Mayor, I can address that. The answer is no, there would not be a vote of the people. These bills essentially allow for individual parcel spot zoning without a vote, and so it really undermines the goal of having that comprehensive planning of larger areas where you're taking into account the needs of all of the different properties along that corridor. So that's, fortunately, these only affect commercial areas, and some of the areas that are proposed in Measure K are not included, but a lot of the areas are.
Councilmember Harlan.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, because I saw it in your slide, and I think it bears repeating that the city did oppose both of those bills. We understand the kind of overreach that might have been there, but nevertheless, it's law now, so it seems like we have to figure out how to deal with it.
Okay. The witness is excused.
Great. Thank you all.
All right. So now it's time for public comments. So we have, three minutes is what people are allocated for public comment. At two minutes, you'll hear a beep, and so try to wrap it up, you'll have a minute left. At three minutes, you get cut off, so we won't be able to hear you at three minutes. And then we're going to go with the people that are in the chambers first, and then we're going to go with folks on Zoom. As for your public comments, the only ground rules are, you could talk about anything, pretty much anything tonight, other than the one item that we have on our agenda, which I can't imagine you'd want to talk about at public comment. So it's like, pretty much anything goes. You could talk about anything you want. So let's kick it off with our leadoff hitter, Ms. Martin. You have the floor.
I'd like to comment about the Costa Mesa Police Department using a routine I call stroke and shaft. The stroke is that I put a post on Facebook asking for my friends to save the hard copy of the Daily Pilot obituary for my husband. And when the obituary was published, a few days later, or maybe a week or so later, I found a large manila envelope in my mailbox, and inside were 10 copies of the Daily Pilot obituary with a wonderful note from Captain Vic Bakula. That's the stroke, a wonderful, wonderful gesture by a good man. The shaft is that the police department does not issue enough traffic citations. On my way over here, I walked, and I've been walking the streets and sidewalks of Costa Mesa for 55 years. On the southwest corner of Vanguard and Fair, I'm waiting for the walk signal, there's a police car ready to make a left turn westbound on Fair Drive. I get the walk signal, and the officer gets the green light, and a motorist charges right through on the red light for him, and the officer in the police car did not give chase. I would like to see, also, the crime app, Info Crime App, for today, shows just one traffic citation and about 10 patrol checks. I'm not sure what a patrol check is, but I know that traffic citations, one is not enough. I would like to see the Costa Mesa PD get what I like to call mean, lean, and ugly when it comes to violations on our streets. On Sunday, I got the walk signal on Centerway and Wilson. There was a driver making a right turn to travel east on Wilson. I pointed to the sign that said, "Yield when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk," more or less. The driver swerved wide and cut right in front of me as I moved across the sidewalk, the crosswalk. We need to get more traffic citations.
Commissioner Vivar, you have the floor.
Yes, hi. First of all, thank you for the walkover presentation, proclamation. It was, I think, good to highlight that, especially people who walk around the city because they have to, and, you know, they can't drive like myself, or people who can't afford to have a car. I just kind of wanted to give like a sort of PSA on something that happened in my community, I think it was about a week ago. There were two young people dressed in blue with black hats who were walking around and asking for people's Medicare cards and ID cards and saying that if they could show that they qualified for Medicare and show their ID, they would get some kind of like a free phone or something like that. And I had that happen in my community several months ago, and I figured out it was a scam. So scams don't just come in the form of emails and phone calls, but sometimes it knocks at your door. So just want to get the word out there. I spoke to our police department about it, and I was told that there's not much they can do other than to go and talk to them. So I called the police department when these suspicious people were around my community a week and a half ago, and I don't know if PD made it out there or not, but I don't know if there's some way that we, as a city, could maybe, as part of the neighborhood watches, maybe catch some of those people, and maybe to collaborate maybe with other law enforcement agencies if our communities are being targeted by scammers. And, yeah, let's protect the vulnerable community against people who want to just prey on unsuspecting people. So, en español, para quienes están escuchando esto, hay personas sospechosas que están yendo a las comunidades a pedir tarjetas de Medicare y sus identificaciones. Y dicen que si califican para Medicare pueden ganar un teléfono gratis. Entonces, nada más quería poner esa información aquí pública para que si alguien agarra eso en su comunidad, que sepan que eso no es verdad, que es un scam, y que quieren robar ese dinero, nada más. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mammy, you have the floor.
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Dentonak. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. On April 5, 2022, the California Department of Housing and Community Development rejected our housing element and provided additional comments. In the seven months since the housing element has not been brought back to council to discuss HCD's comments or potential revisions, and therefore, we have not had our housing element certified by HCD. According to the HCD website, a SCAG city such as Costa Mesa seeking to maintain the three-year deadline for rezoning must have had a certified housing element by October 15, 2022. Otherwise, HCD states that jurisdictions cannot be found in compliance with the housing element law until all necessary rezones are complete. It is now October 18. What I take this to mean is that we are now solidly out of compliance with the state housing element law and will be until we complete our rezoning. As a resident, I would like to understand why the council has not discussed the housing element other than in the context of Measure K. Public discussion, which HCD emphasizes is critical to the housing element process, is undermined if it only happens after critical deadlines have passed. Being out of compliance comes with serious consequences. In Santa Monica, we have seen almost 4,000 units of housing proposed and entitled without regard to that city's zoning code and without approval by either the City Council or the Planning Commission under the so-called builder's remedy law while Santa Monica's housing element was out of compliance. We are also subject to these remedies, but in this situation, our situation seems much worse because of Measure Y. Not only are we out of compliance, we have no way to immediately get into compliance because of Measure Y's citywide vote requirement. We must pass Measure K. In the immediate term, Measure K will empower the council to do the required rezoning efficiently, and we may be subject to these penalties, including the builder's remedy, for only a few months. But if Measure K fails, I believe the city will be subject to these penalties until we take a new vote under Measure Y, which could take months or even years if it takes multiple votes. Based on what I have seen, it isn't an exaggeration to say that local control of land use by any city body in Costa Mesa, whether the council or the voters, depends on passing Measure K. That is the reality. Measure K is a good Public discussion, which HCD emphasizes is critical to the housing element process, is undermined if it only happens after critical deadlines have passed. Being out of compliance comes with serious consequences. In Santa Monica, we have seen almost 4,000 units of housing proposed and entitled without regard to that city's zoning code and without approval by either the City Council or the Planning Commission, under the so-called builder's remedy law, while Santa Monica's housing element was out of compliance. We are also subject to these remedies. But in this situation, our situation seems much worse because of Measure Y. Not only are we out of compliance, we have no way to immediately get into compliance because of Measure Y's citywide vote requirement. We must pass Measure K. In the immediate term, Measure K will empower the council to do the required rezoning efficiently, and we may be subject to these penalties, including the builder's remedy, for only a few months. But if Measure K fails, I believe the city will be subject to these penalties until we take a new vote under Measure Y, which could take months or even years if it takes multiple votes. Based on what I have seen, it isn't an exaggeration to say that local control of land use by any city body in Costa Mesa, whether the council or the voters, depends on passing Measure K. That is the reality. Measure K is a good policy that deserves to stand on its own. Measure Y has produced no votes on significant projects or city-sponsored rezonings in six years. A similar measure in Redondo Beach has produced one vote in 14 years. In theory, Measure Y gives the residents a say, but in practice, it takes away our voice. With nothing to vote on, we have been disenfranchised and usurped by city councils and planning commissions that held offices years ago. Measure K gives us at least back control of our industrial and commercial corridors. It is a good start, and now it is necessary policy. I urge everyone to vote yes on Measure K.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Hi, good afternoon.
My name is Amaro.
And I just want to give a comment regarding the gentleman who gave a presentation regarding Sacramento. I understood that they're investing more money in buildings and development, in homes. My fear is that developing these buildings will increase the rent here in Costa Mesa. Because that's what's been happening to me ever since they built the apartments around here. Every year, they increase my rent because they're trying to get to the same rent as the new apartments. That's my worry, that they come, do what they say, and they don't take in account the members of the public or the community. And also that they speak on the provisions and the security in the schools. They could invest in programs that keep the young children and adolescents involved within the city. Because I do see that you invest in programs, parks, things in that nature, but I don't see anything invested for children after school hours. Because I have two children, one at Newport Harbor and another one as well, and I see a lot of problems with drugs and issues at school. Because I hear all this talk about doing programs regarding this, but there's actually nothing being done. Because my understanding that the future of this country and the city is the young adults. Because we need to give these children supplies. We need to give them something so that they can move forward, and as they are the future. So that is my worry. A lot of us parents are not able to survive, and it's a lot of expense. That's what I wanted to say, because it does worry me that there's all these issues and we're not seeing, we're not taking into account. This is why I've come. This is my second time here, and I'm speaking on behalf of them. That is all, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
And good night.
Commissioner Toller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I came here to speak on the topic of Measure Y, but first, I wanted to echo what Flo Martin said about enforcement on our streets, about street safety. I take my kids to Woodland and Kaiser Elementary on the east side every day, and we do see illegally parked cars. You know, parents are finding any spot to park, often on corners, creating blind spots and making the crossings dangerous, drop off and pick up queue lines blocking bike lanes. But even when they block the driving lane, it creates a real hazard for people, you know, little kids and even grownups, trying to squeeze through parked and moving cars with doors open, people moving in and out. And I thought for a long time, that is a matter of enforcement. There's not a lot of options in coming up with solutions to address that. But I think cops on bikes, that's what I've always thought, would be reasonable, that they're not trying to maneuver their cars and SUVs through, or being a real strong, menacing presence. But cops on bikes near schools, I think, should happen soon. So anyway, I'm here awkwardly to talk about Measure Y. Awkwardly because I respect people on both sides, and I hate how divisive this has become. And I respect all the work that the opposition has put into this. Also, because it's not an exciting measure. I think we need zoning reform. I mean, we know that we need to figure out our design standards and lock those in so that as development comes in, it comes in well, in the shape that we want our city to grow into. And Measure Y is not a silver bullet. It's solving one kind of technicality, right? It's a really important technicality, so I am advocating for it. But it is not solving all our problems. What I see in the opposition to Measure Y, in the depths of social media...
Excuse me, I'm going to stop you. You mean Measure K, right?
Thank you for that. I am talking about Measure K. For some reason, I think you did that to me earlier. What characterizes the opposition, really, is fear. When you hear people talk against it, when you see writings against it, and I jotted down some of those things, and I just want to, with my 45 seconds left, talk about those things. Losing the right to vote on development projects, that's waved around a lot. That's not actually a thing. Nobody, we don't, the Constitution doesn't give us a right, as a community, to veto directly development projects. We are like leaders that share a vision for the future of our city, and through a process that's established and transparent, that invites public input, we all do that together. Losing your right to vote on development projects is not a thing. Traffic and cut through, that's a big one. We all think there's too many cars. If we're against traffic, let's advocate for better pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, zoning reform, so that neighborhood amenities can go where they're currently not allowed. Neighborhood character...
Sorry. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Well, Service Committee, I've been the chair for almost four years, and I wanted to come and shed some light on some of the things that have been going on with that. I've escalated this to the city attorney, to the city manager's office, to the mayor, now to the council, with very little response as a whole. There's multiple violations in the contract with Newport Center Animal Hospital. I have a copy of the scope of services, and the violations start within the first paragraph of the scope of services and are filtered throughout the contract. It should be an exciting time in animal services. We have a new team of animal control. We should be moving forward, but instead, we continue to trickle down because our contract with Newport Center Animal Hospital is a negative contract. It has poor outcomes. We can't get city records requests. I have a records request on two animals pending, as of today, for five weeks. These are medical records. These should be accessible at the drop of a hat. I have multiple other records that I intend to request, but I can't even get records for five weeks on two recent animals. How am I going to get them on anybody else? There's a lot of lack of transparency. The city staff who have the oversight for the contract seem apathetic about it. They've been made aware of the issues over and over and over again, and instead of dealing with the issues and addressing them, they seem to pit the contracts against each other. Each contract should stand alone in and of itself and be held accountable with our city's pride and transparency. That's not happening. This is a quarter of a million dollar contract. May not seem like a lot, but we're already over a million dollars in. Some people have suggested that the alternative solution is Orange County Animal Care, which it's not. That's a million dollar buy-in, just to start. Our city took a huge pride in our animal services when we initially set up this committee, and the mayor and the staff at the time set up this committee. And once it was set up, it was just, feels like it's been abandoned. It's been abandoned by the city staff. It's been abandoned by council, and it's like, okay, we can check that box, and we can move on. But in reality, there's animals that are getting sick. There's animals that aren't getting the services they need. Documentation is poor. There's no transparency. City staff either don't have the authority or aren't doing the oversight that they should be doing. It's continuing to be an issue. So from a solution standpoint, my request is that the city takes into consideration the amendments to the contract that were suggested at the September meeting, and then puts the contract out for an RFP. In effect, all the contracts out for an RFP this year. They do expire in June, and it would be my request that the council will look into it and, at minimum, put it out for an RFP, so that it can be actually seen in the community. The previous contract was re-signed during COVID without notification to anybody, including the committee. And so this time, I'd like it to be public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Humphrey.
Good evening, City Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I'm very pleased that we have received upward, over $10 million because of Dave Men and the work of this city for our parks and open space. I, being an advocate for parks and open space for many, many years, it really pleases me that we now have this bunch of money. I think it's great. I am concerned, though, that, in talking to the two committees dealing with parks primarily, the Park Commission and the Fairview Park Steering Committee, that they were never consulted about what to do with that money before we got it, after we got it. They just weren't talked about. And of course, those are citizen committees, which means that the citizens of Costa Mesa did not have any commentary to be made about what's going to happen with parks and open space and that $10 million, which may have just been allocated automatically. That speaks to the same idea of removing citizens' input that we see in Measure K. You know, the simple answer is, is Measure K was passed at night, when the final version of it that showed up here showed up an hour before it was actually voted on. And the citizens, no matter whether they had their three minutes or not to talk about it, the reality is, nobody had a chance to actually sit down and think about it and everything else, and then give their honest comments on it. So Measure K passed that way, and of course, its benefit for the city is it stops citizen participation in the fact that it says, hey, you can't vote. What's really interesting is, is that AB 2011 and SB 6 kind of eliminate part of the argument you had about what you had to do relative to making all this stuff exempted from all the commercial and industrial area, exempted from Measure Y requirements. And so Major AB 2011 and SB 6 appear to me to actually process those exemptions. Now, I know you guys don't want the state telling you what to do, and I don't want the state telling us what to do. But the truth of the matter is, is that one of the arguments she uses is no definition by the state about what, or no definition about what the state mandated. And the reality is, is this says what state mandated it is, and it exempts it. So you guys think about what you're doing when you do that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Last week, I made similar comments that I'm making tonight at the Parks Commission meeting. I didn't anticipate it, but frankly, my comments resonated with quite a few people, and some of them asked me to make similar comments tonight to council. As you know, the city recently received $10 million and $1 million. It's $10 million for parks in general and the $1 million for Ketchum Leibold Park, thanks to State Senator Dave Men and Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norse. I learned a few things since that Thursday night, last Thursday. The initial list of projects submitted to Senator Men's office used was then the current five-year capital forecast for parks, and that made reasonable sense. That list of projects totaled $27 million and was 55 individual projects. Now, I'm a little fuzzy, but as I understand, the $27 million has been pared down to the $10 million, which was the funding amount, with some projects identified, but I'm not sure if all the projects have been identified to equal the entire $10 million. To the degree that the list of projects has yet to be finalized, I believe the Parks Commission needs to be involved. That was my message at last Thursday's Park Commission meeting, and that's my message tonight. The Parks Commission, working with staff, needs to be squarely involved in this decision-making process. And I don't mean just reviewing a list of projects provided by staff, but I mean involved in the discussions, the give and take, the trade-offs between projects. The commissioners were appointed by you and, by extension, represent the people, and the people need to be, people need to be involved in this process. Similarly, the $1 million from Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norse for Ketchum Leibold, that should free up $1 million that's in the current budget, the current capital budget for this year. And the Parks Commission should be involved in determining where that $1 million could be reallocated, to what projects that could be reallocated to. This, all this feeds also into the Open Space Master Plan, which the Parks Commission will also be reviewing. Then I would imagine the final review would come to council before that final list goes up to Dave Men's office. I mean, it's not every day that the city receives $10 million for anything, and we want to make sure that that $10 million gets spent wisely and that all the parties that should be involved are involved in deciding how that gets allocated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Leyli Golean, and I'm a student at the UCI School of Law, and I've been a resident of Orange County for nearly a decade. One of the most concerning trends I've observed in Costa Mesa and Orange County in general is the rising cost of rent and lack of affordable housing. Rent and home prices are rising, while virtually no new homes have been built in the last decade. As a child from a single-parent household, I've witnessed my mother struggle to pay rent while, at times, working two full-time jobs. There's absolutely no reason for families to suffer as such, when affordable housing should be a universal right for all to enjoy. Addressing the housing crisis and homelessness will benefit taxpayers and cities as well. According to a 2017 study conducted by UC Irvine researchers, Orange County would save $42 million a year in healthcare, law enforcement, and other expenses by placing people who chronically live on the streets into housing. So I urge you all today to keep housing affordability at the forefront of your concerns and develop strategies to effectively and sustainably keep the costs of rent and homeownership down. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I sent some photos to Ms. Green by email. Did you, you didn't see them? Oh, no. Okay. Well, I had some photos to go along with the presentation, so. I had emailed them to you, so. Okay. Before noon, so. Okay. All right. Well, we'll do without. So when I participated in the recent Walk the School event for Palo Reno School, I had a chance to get to walk my neighborhood, that's where I live, and talk to parents along the way. I always enjoy doing that. It's a great event. And my own kids went to school there 35 years ago, so I know the school. But it seems we're having some problems in our neighborhood. On Palo Reno Street, I brought some photos, and if they were here, you would notice some damage to a wall. According to a 2017 study conducted by UC Irvine researchers, Orange County would save $42 million a year in healthcare, law enforcement, and other expenses by placing people who chronically live on the streets into housing. So I urge you all today to keep housing affordability at the forefront of your concerns and develop strategies to effectively and sustainably keep the costs of rent and homeownership down. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I sent some photos to Ms. Green to you by email. Did you, you didn't see them? Oh, no. Okay. Well, I had some photos to go along with the presentation, so. I had emailed them to you, so. Okay. Before noon, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll do without. So when I participated in the recent Walk the School event for Palo Reno School, I had a chance to get to walk my neighborhood, that's where I live, and talk to parents along the way. I always enjoy doing that. It's a great event. And my own kids went to school there 35 years ago, so I know the school. But it seems we're having some problems in our neighborhood. On Palo Reno Street, I brought some photos, and if they were here, you would notice some damage to a wall, a block fence wall at the intersection of Bab Street and Palo Reno. So somebody didn't stop coming into the track and ran into the wall. In another spot on Palo Reno Street, closer to the school, there's a dead-end street that tees into Palo Reno Street. They ran across the curb, across the yard, across Palo Reno, and into a block wall. That has since been fixed, so I didn't have any photos of that. Then there's another block wall that was destroyed at the intersection of Baker Street and Bab Street. Bab Street is the entrance to our housing tract. And that block wall got blasted through, and car ended up in the front yard, and the owner is currently putting in some steel posts embedded in heavy concrete. Something's going on in the neighborhood in terms of reckless driving. I'm not sure what to do about it. So anyway, the other thing was, is I was talking to one of the parents at the entrance to the school on that day, and he was wheeling his little boy in a wheelchair with a cast on his leg. And I said, oh, what happened? And he got hit by a pickup truck running a stop sign while riding his bicycle to school a couple, just a couple of weeks prior to that. And so the truck actually ran over him and had to back off. And so that's currently in litigation, I guess. He's suing the person. I hadn't heard about that. I mean, I wish I had. So he also reported some high-speed, late-night racing on Palo Reno Street. I mean, this is a quiet neighborhood. I was just really surprised to hear that. So he's in favor of some sort of speed bumps or, I'm suggesting maybe we can put up cameras and start to police the area. So this is what I find out on Walk the School Day. So it's very disconcerting. We want to encourage kids to bike and walk to school, but I don't know what to do. I just wanted to call out the fact that there's some reckless driving.
This'll be our last person from the chambers. Yes.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Garcia, the president of the Harbor Soaring Society, 501(c)(3) nonprofit based in Costa Mesa since 1964. First, I just wanted to talk about a couple topics. First, thank you to the Parks Department for putting on a great scarecrow festival. We were there with our scarecrow and gave away 250 pumpkin gliders to the kids. It was a lot of fun. The kids had fun. It's always a good event, so thank you. The second topic, as one of the previous speakers mentioned, programs at our, at our schools are really important. HSS has been involved with a lot of STEM and STEAM activities over the years. One that we're currently, currently involved in, we got involved at the end of the summer. We made three visits to Estancia High School. They have an incredible engineering lab at the school, and they've got two very high-tech CNC machines that unfortunately have been sitting there for four years since they were provided to the school. Our members are volunteered, and we made some visits and worked with educator, Mr. Jerry Rusa, to get the machines up and running with, with help from the Newport Mesa School District, as well providing funding and organizations like Vitalink. But working with the educator, we got the machines up and running. We also, when school started, we made three additional visits, and the students have, have now gone from designing parts in 3D modeling software to manufacturing parts on the machines. And so these are industrial machines that are used in industry today, and are, one of our goals is to get some of the students certified in these machines so that they could directly out of high school become machine operators at very well and high-paying wages. But college engineering students, I'll point out, don't get the opportunity to manufacture or design, manufacture, and build on, on the machine like this. So it's a great opportunity. Anyway, that's all. We're excited to be part of the community and looking forward to getting gliders flying up every park soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So looks like there's three more people that are going to speak. There are four, another four people. Okay? So everybody, if you're going to speak, come on up.
I think there might be a couple more than that back there.
Well, it'd be good if they, just if they come up, so just, so I don't think that we're done. So, but without further ado, Ms. Lefler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm wearing this dress that has a Ukrainian-type embroidery on it, and I have such a sympathy for the Ukrainians. And it's wearing black for two reasons, because I'm mourning with them, and there's a group called Pray for Ukraine, a Facebook page, that if you're inclined to join them, that you'll just have your heart torn out by what you hear and see on the page, but you can pray with a group of people all over the world that are praying for this situation. That's another reason I'm wearing this black dress, is because it's a dress of mourning. And I am mourning the fact that we have a city council that is nothing like the council of the people that we had thought we would have. There are three people sitting up there now that I helped get elected to the first election. Now, John is, he was not elected to the seat he's in now. And all of you ran on a platform of low density and protect our neighborhoods, and we backed you. A group of over 1,000 people backed you to get you on the council because of that promise and that attitude. And now I see that your attitude is not with the people of Costa Mesa, but with the developers that are funding your campaigns. And Measure K is on the ballot, written in a very professional and tricky and convoluted way. And Measure Y is on the battle, on the ballot. It's on, it's a referendum really on whether we're going to continue to have Y or not. I think that the Rose Equities people made a big mistake by not sending that to the voters because that parcel across the freeway was exactly the kind of parcel that Y would have supported. Here we are in what I think is going to become a big mess. We need Y. We need to preserve Y. And K will kill the spirit of Costa Mesa and change the profile and type of city that Costa Mesa is, and it will no longer be a comfortable suburban with enough housing for what we need and enough housing in little spurts for more things, for more people. It's just not one for the way of life, the quality of life that Costa Masons want. So no on K and protect our right to vote on projects that we, that we can vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'd also like an update on the city's housing element. There's no way to tell from the city's website what the city is doing with respect to satisfying the demands of the Department of Housing and Community Development. The HCD's website doesn't give much indication of progress either. It shows that our housing element, our housing element is not in compliance. Please confirm that the latest revision by the city was timely submitted and under review. And if it wasn't, why not? As I just said, the HCD website shows we're out of compliance. It's been a lot of fuss made by folks on social media about the builder's remedy. Perhaps we can get an explanation of why or why not that would apply to Costa Mesa today. Of the 24 programs in our housing element, only Program 3G, which relates to the ballot measure that neuters Measure Y, is the one people seem to think is going to get us back in compliance or keep us out. Perhaps we could get an explanation so we can be clear about some of this confusion. I've been reviewing other cities' housing elements, particularly cities that have voter approval ordinances. A particular entrance, interest is Yorba Linda. As you may know, Yorba Linda's housing element was certified in April. Yorba Linda has a voter approval ordinance since 2006, Measure B, that in some ways is like Measure Y. If there's any rezoning of parcels in the city, the rezoning goes to a voter, the residents. The programs in its housing element specify not only the intent to put the required zoning changes to a vote, but also describe three new overlay zones anticipated by the program. So Yorba Linda had to do some planning. On August 9th, after months of public outreach, Yorba Linda City Council put the amendments to the general plan and the required zoning on the ballot. If you want to follow it, it's Measure Z. So Costa Mesa didn't do that. You didn't even give it consideration because you don't trust the residents. While the Yorba Linda City Council seems to trust its residents, it has a Plan B if Measure Z fails. It's right in the housing element. What is Costa Mesa's Plan B? It's nowhere to be found. The process to put Measure K on the ballot was flawed. I'm thinking of being generous if I say it was sloppy and the measures deceptive. In addition, we have the fact that the city is not being transparent because if it was, we'd know what Plan B is. Which brings up another matter. This city, despite being told by its auditors several times that it needs one, has never adopted an ethics policy. There's a lack of transparency, and it feels like the city council's responsibility to engage the public in the policymaking process has been forgotten. We need one now, and I request you prioritize it to the top of the list.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, there you go. You're on.
I have a PowerPoint of Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. First thing, I hope everyone votes yes on Measure K. It's really the only thing that could make here living affordable, and I really hope it passes, and I think it's, I think it's good and well-written. Anyways, storytime, and the only context you need for this story is that I work at the lab. So in 1918, while on the World War I battlefield, British poet Wilfred Owen wrote a poem criticizing the glory and nationalism of war, writing, "The old lie, dulce est decorum est, perpetua mori," meaning it's honorable and righteous to die for one's country. Anyways, so my friend Tommy and Rain, I met them when Tommy worked at Nook Coffee at the lab, 10 steps from where I worked. Tommy Rain met, actually, when Rain would come and get coffee at Nook after her day being a nurse and working at Aritzia in South Coast Plaza. They were young, 22 years old, newly engaged, actually, and they were lovely friends to have. Tom recently left Nook in pursuit of becoming a professional photographer. He spent his time, his money, and his love on Rain and their puppy. They were months away from moving out of Costa Mesa to New York City, a city that they loved and visited often. Two weeks ago, at 2:00 in the morning, a drunk driver going in the opposite direction on the freeway interchange slammed into Tommy and Rain's car. Rain perished on the spot, and Tommy just got out of critical care. A week ago at the lab, a pickup truck and its associated driver going opposite the flow of traffic on Bristol drove into the dining room of Bread's Hot Chicken and threw the wall shared by the beloved vegan restaurant Seabird's Kitchen. This then pinned the nine-month-pregnant, very last day before maternity leave, general manager of Seabird's in her office necessitating first responders' action, and she was promptly hospitalized. I'm sad. I'm sad for the two small businesses, Seabird's being one of my favorites. I'm sad for the working-class employees out of work and due to indefinite closure of Seabird's. I'm sad for the visceral trauma this caused on the employees. But more than sad, I'm angry. Why is because this is all preventable. Car-centric urban design was a choice that we made as a society, that the profession of traffic engineers made, and that politicians made intentionally, that said, that the velocity and efficiency of big metal boxes driven by imperfect and error-prone human beings was more important than having safe public spaces, especially for our kids. Our government could stop having state-mandated parking at bars, build our streets and roads so that it would be impossible for cars to hit deadly speeds, especially near pedestrian plazas, ban cars tall enough that you can't see kids in front of you, take air pollution seriously, require speed governors in cars. But we can't because our societies lie. Dulce est decorum est, pro automobile mori. And while I'm here, just to end, vote yes on Measure K. Yeah, if you want yard signs, I'm sitting in the back. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Wendy Leese, and I appreciate what Ms. Lefler said. There's one, two, three, four people, four people that I helped campaign for four years ago and would hope that would represent me as a longtime 50-year resident. And I want to talk to you about some of the other issues that have been touched on, and one is transparency. First, the issue with what I call briefly is the men money. It was, it was given in June, and here we are in October. I would think by now you would have some kind of study session or clarification on how the money is going to be distributed. Fairview Park received part of that money, and yet it went for grasslands and to repair the bluffs. But in my study of past allocations, the bluffs were restored to some extent. So it's a very complex, it's a lot of money, but there's a lot of people in the city that want to be involved in how it's spent. So it's transparency. I think you should have a study session, and it should also, the Fairview Park should go before the Steering Committee also. You know, we love a spirited debate. You remember in the history book about Costa Mesa, one year that some of the campaigning went down on the East Side, and they threw tomatoes because they, you know, they were, we don't do that anymore. But we do disagree, and I disagree on principle on Measure K. I think it was wrong for you to have an ad hoc committee and not to be transparent, not to let us, those of us who collected signatures, 7,000-plus, those of us who walked and campaigned for Measure Y, to have input. And you guys got in your closed door, no agenda, no minutes, and, and you cut us out. And dear Mr. Humphrey had come before you, talking many times about what are you doing about this? What are you, we knew that Rose Equities was, was, you know, planning, but they just waited it out until they didn't have to put it on, on the ballot for us to have our voice heard. So you don't have a plan. And that, the plan is this map that's in the voter guide, and it's amazing that so many places are up for grabs. I'm glad that you opposed AB 2011 and SB 6, but you know, what's sad is that the state is taking away our local control, and they're making it centralized control. And you know what that is? Socialism. No, thank you. No on K.
Okay. Now we're done in the chambers. Let's go to Zoom. Madam Clark.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Hank Castaneda, please.
Mr. Castaneda, you're on the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and all the good people of Costa Mesa who are watching and listening to this meeting. I'd just like to point out that the Orange County Model Engineers gave over 2,300 rides this past weekend when we celebrated Halloween with our spooky Pirate Days. A number of pirate-themed dioramas were, were built by two members over a couple of months and set up around the railroad. We'd like to thank Kathy Pocousen and Louie Argary for all their hard work. I would also like to remind the city, if you haven't heard, October 25th, the Orange County Model Engineers will have a trestle rededicating ceremony at the trestle in the park. This is rededicating the Hank Hornsfield Memorial Trestle that after 20, 30 years finally gave up the ghost. The club raised over $32,000 from the generous donations of the city residents, and rebuilt At this event, the Hank Hornsfield's granddaughter, Michelle Christiansen, will be there to accept a presentation from the train club. We'll have a ribbon cutting and then followed by a big toot. We're going to line up a bunch of trains on the, on the trestle, and when the celebration is, is concluded... is concluded, we'll all blow our horns and whistles. Also like to let everybody know that the train club's new webpage is up and running, and it's otme-trains.org. Also, one other thing, too, real quick, that while we gave 2,300 rides this last weekend, that puts us just about at 20,000 free rides for the community this year, and we didn't run in January because the city asked us not to because of a COVID flare-up. Also, another thing, this is brand-new, on our November run weekend, the 19th and 20th, the club is now working to collect toys for Toys for Tots program. And I'm happy to announce that while we haven't worked out all the details yet, we will be partnering with the Goat Hill Lions Club. So keep that those dates, the 19th and 20th, come for free rides, bring toys for tots. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phone number ending in 714, please.
Yes, I'm commenting on the two earlier speakers that were speaking on the Parks Committee and the Animal Committee, and it seems like there's something very similar going on, that the committees are not being listened to, they're not having information given to them so that they can participate and take back information to the community. If this is transparency, then I think we need to rework the definition of transparency. The animal shelter, there's been a number of complaints about the animals not getting proper treatment from the current veterinarian, that the surgical processes that they're going through are less than appropriate, and that the animals are suffering behind this. I don't think the city wants to have that type of onus on their animal shelter. So I hope that all this information coming out about the animal shelter will drive an investigation, that we'll get an RFP out there and help these committees to find out the information and do what they were appointed to do. And on another another issue on measure K, I listened to the Sacramento analyst, and basically, this issues that are pending with the housing is a one-size-fits-all. It doesn't matter if you're a 16-square-mile-city or if you're a 100-mile-square-city. They just want this overbuilding. We want the city to have affordable housing. It's doable, but the problem is there's no planning. There has been no planning. In K, there's not one mention of affordable housing or any housing. Maybe there's some promises being made out in the community, but K does not fulfill it because it doesn't specify, doesn't specify on height, it doesn't specify anything but jelly beans and unicorns. And again, that makes the people very, very uncomfortable with the government. The government is here to fulfill and make the people feel comfortable. This is not happening. That's why K has come to the forefront of the opposition. You tried to sidestep it, and the people are saying, no, we don't know about it, we don't have the correct information. This one-size-fits-all is not what we want. And as far as the analyst saying that our vote, we don't have the right to vote on this, we do have the right to vote for those that are making these decisions, and some of those voters and some of those candidates are on the ballot. So if you're unhappy with what's happening local, you better look at what's happening statewide. And with that, I say yes on on the people stepping forward and letting your voice be heard, and that's no on K. You can go to Costa Mesa first. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Closed public comment, and then we'll move on to the council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. First up from District 4 is Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone who spoke today. I really appreciate your diverse topics and different opinions. I first want to begin with acknowledging comments made by Commissioner Bavard. I appreciate him sharing those scam attempts, I know they're very common, predominantly in lower-income areas and in mobile home parks. I'm happy that he's raising awareness, and for folks that do see something like that, it's a great time to call the police. The police are there to help. Don't feel scared calling the police, they're meant to serve us. So if you have any suspicions, don't be hesitant to call them. So with that, I have a few things I want to mention regarding my district. First thing is I had the opportunity to walk on Charlie Street, the street parallel to Harbor Boulevard, and when I was there, I noticed a lot of issues with that street. The first one I noticed was that a lot of vegetation from the plants was growing into the sidewalk to the point where there was an entire tree bench covering the sidewalk. Furthermore, residents of Charlie Street mentioned that water does not go down the sewer drain, it stays in the pool. There was a variety of parts of that street where there'd be piles of water that was not going down the sewage. I'm not sure if that was because the asphalt that was being done years ago was not done adequately, but that to me is a hazard, particularly when we have vegetation covering the sidewalk. Many of these folks can't be walking on the sidewalk. Secondly, I want an update at some point on when folks can start reapplying for their permits. Noel Street in my district is parallel, is perpendicular to a large condominium complex that rents out most of their rooms there, so it's basically an apartment complex, and those folks used to have permit parking. They have since barely not had it due to various reasons, but I'd like to know when they can reapply for it because they are being impacted. I know it's not just them, but the street that came to my attention. Next, when I was walking near Shalamar, I noticed that there's a lot of taggings on graffiti. It seems like a lot of the youth have been active in that sense, so I would encourage to have code enforcement walk around that part after weekends just because it was a lot, and a lot of it was on not only city property, like the box, like the digital boxes, but also on properties. And that to me did not seem fair. Furthermore, Wallace Street had a lot of concerns about folks saying they're speeding. I have heard this complaint a lot on other parts in my district, that cars are speeding down these parallel streets to Placentia and Harbor. And when I was on Wallace, I saw a lot of donut marks. So it seems like folks are, at some point in the night, going around driving. I know I know our PD recently adjusted their way of handling patrols, we have more patrol units. That makes me very happy because I think one thing that we're missing is having the police officers patrol the actual streets themselves. It's nice to have them patrolling the big thoroughfares like 19th Street, Harbor, Wilson, but sometimes these issues arise in actual neighborhoods. Having a presence there would be really helpful, so if we can improve on that, that would be amazing. And then finally, on things to update on, I was visiting my dad who lives on Rutgers Drive and a few residents that are talking to me about the difficulties they face with street sweeping. So Rutgers Drive is near Bacano Drive, between Wilson and Bacano Drive, really dense part of of the city next to Wilson Park, and a lot of the folks there have to wait until after 10:00 PM to move their cars, sorry, 10:00 AM after a street sweeper comes by to move their cars. A lot of folks have told me that they've come to work late, that they've been getting warnings at work because they are scared to park their car after the street sweeping passes by because if their car is parked between 8:00 and 10:00, they'll get a ticket even if the street sweeper has passed by. I know it's hard sometimes because there'd be a lot of street sweepers, but this is a primarily working-class community, a low-income class community. You know, the street is really dense, it's not like they have the best working conditions and living conditions, and it's a real shame that in some ways they're being, the folks are targeted by the street sweepers. So just want to raise that awareness for the future. But I do not want to end with all bitterness and sadness. I'm mentioning these things to the public because I want you to know that we are hearing your concerns, we are hearing the fact that there's issues that we can improve on. One of those things that I have heard that's positive note was this last Friday, I had the pleasure of going where President Biden held a speech at IVC. The entire speech was actually held was revolved around inflation reduction, primarily on seniors. So the president was discussing how they're augmenting social security to make sure that seniors have an ability to beat inflation while also capping the price of some medications like insulin. I think that's incredibly helpful to some folks in my district that live in on 19th Street Tower, but more importantly, it's an example that even the federal government acknowledging the basic fact of life, that everything is going up in price, and rent is a big part of that prices. You know, I've talked to some seniors both in Costa Mesa and Santa Ana who have told me directly that their biggest concern is not being able to afford their rents. You know, their fixed incomes and rents keep going up and up and up. I know it's difficult to have, but I think at some point, the bugs got to stop, and Sacramento has passed some laws that have had some adverse effects regarding rent control, and I think at some point, we need to be looking at options about that. Because it's really unfair that a lot of our residents in Costa Mesa can't even focus on issues like a green space because they're focusing on issues of can they afford to live? Can they afford meals for the week? And finally, I just want to acknowledge that last last week, we had a member of the public of the Iranian community talk to us, pleading us to make a resolution regarding the atrocities happening in Iran. I do want to make a suggestion to council that, I know we may not think the works, but I would like to see us have a resolution condemning those acts against women. You know, in America, we're seeing a lot of fights against women's rights, and it extends beyond America, but I think it'd be very powerful for us to acknowledge the strength that women are having in Iran and make sure that we're recognizing their bravery. Those are my comments. Thank you everyone for joining us today. I know today is a short meeting, but again, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your feedback, and I appreciate most of all the difference of opinions that you provide us. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next up is Councilmember Harland from District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best to help make this a short meeting, too. Just a few things to note. First, I want to echo Councilmember Chavez's comments about proclamation regarding the attacks against women in Iran. I wholeheartedly support us putting something together. I know it's important to our community, and he's absolutely right. You know, assaults on on women in this way are reprehensible and certainly not what we stand for in this country. Two other things in the, well, we'll start with city stuff. I just want to acknowledge the opening of Orange County Museum of Art again last week. Hopefully, you got to go visit. First, everybody should know that it's free admission for the next 10 years, which is phenomenal. I wasn't able to join everyone at the ribbon cutting, but I had been there at an event, evening event earlier in the week. It's a phenomenal facility, and we are so fortunate to have it here, and I encourage everybody to go visit. It's not just for for art, it's for architecture, it's community, it's just a wonderful space. On the East Side, I am very pleased to report, and Mr. Seth Raman can give more details about this, that we have a new protective crossing at Tustin and Woodland Place coming imminently. I think it includes some bulbouts and a beacon on the crosswalk. We are doing so much for pedestrian safety, especially safe routes to schools, and I think this will make an improvement over at Kaiser and Woodland, so I'm very much looking forward to that happening very soon. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank Jason Minter for responding so quickly to a request regarding Jordan Park and providing a new picnic table there. I know that sounds like something really small, but I know that my constituent was incredibly appreciative of it. Sometimes those little things really do go a long way, and it's not just for one person, it's really for the the community. And I think that kind of spirit that we have in our staff responding in those ways to our our community is is really important, and it's a testament to the the values that we've espoused here as a council. And that is all for me.
All right. Well done. Okay, so then we're moving to District 5 and Councilmember Arlist Reynolds.
Great. Okay, so a few quick things. Yes, absolutely in support of the proclamation. I want to thank our resident, Hanga May Abraham. I don't see her out there, hopefully she's listening. Thank her for requesting that we both make a statement and also support an event. She hosted an event out in front of the city to demonstrate in protest of the brutality happening in Iran and celebrating the women who are standing up against it. So thank you, Hanga May. She also provided some language that we're working on for, or using for a proclamation. A quick thing I've been meaning to ask her for a long time. So we have a great program in Costa Mesa to give trees, to plant trees in front of residents' homes. A lot of people, when they hear about this, they are interested in it, but it is hard to find some information about it. So it would be really great if we could just have a webpage connected to our website that provides information about about the tree program. You know, that it exists, what are the requirements, and how to sign up for that tree program. I'd love to be able to just send residents directly to that webpage. Thank you for the comments on the Animal Services Committee. I know the mayor is very interested in that committee, and I think Mayor Protem has followed up on that. I know our staff are working on it, so I'll let I'll let them comment. We've had a number of comments about the very exciting budget money that we got for our parks in Costa Mesa. I know there's there's some rules tied to how that money can be used based on the requests we put in. The requests, I know, are based on approved CIP projects in budgets, but absolutely, that money frees up some funds for additional park projects, and I, the timing works well, I think, to have those discussions as we update our city's open space master plan. And then we're also, a quick update from the Fairview Park Committee, I think within the next couple of months, we should be receiving the recommendation for a contractor for the Fairview Park master plan update. So I'm very excited about that. It's been a long time coming, some delays through COVID, but but that'll be a really, really important and interesting project that we're working on through the Fairview Park Committee here in Costa Mesa. There was a comment about ethics. It's something I've been thinking about, given what's going on in Los Angeles right now, and ethics and a code of conduct, fully in support of having that for our council. Surprised we didn't already, actually, or if that's accurate, so fully in support of that. I wanted to add something to the legislative updates, this is sort of a nice story. I think Councilmember Chavez mentioned once, or last meeting, one of the pieces of legislation was that it's no longer allowed for cities to give tickets for people not having their bikes registered. That legislation, my understanding is that legislation started in Costa Mesa from some analysis by not only a Costa Mesa resident, but a graduate of Costa Mesa High School. So one of our activists here in the city, looking at different ways that we're keeping our streets safe, looked at some data, saw how some of these tickets were being handed out and saw some disparities, shared that information sort of up the chain. One of our state legislators saw that and was really interested in in taking some action. So pretty exciting how how that process worked and how it started in in Costa Mesa. So thank you to that resident and all of the advocates who work in that area. Okay. I guess that takes me to safe streets. So we've heard another, a few comments here about our streets and the continued challenges and danger on our streets. If you've been watching council meetings for the last few years, you know this is something we're taking very seriously and working on. We've hired staff to work on this, we've increased budgets to work on this, we bug our staff daily to be working on this, and we've got a lot of projects in process. I just want to continue to put, you know, my full support and weight behind the need to take safe streets very seriously in this community. I think it's, I want us to be talking about it as a public safety issue. I think it's one of the biggest public safety issues in the city, given deaths we've had in this community, serious injuries in this community, and then near misses every day. We're doing a lot of good work, we're going to continue doing a lot of good work on this front. I do believe that one of the best ways to improve driving in Costa Mesa, absolutely is infrastructure. In addition to that, is to get people walking and biking. When I walked more and biked more in Costa Mesa, I became a better driver because I realized what people walking and biking were experiencing. So that will continue to be a part of my strategy as well, inviting people to get on their bicycle and walk in safe areas, experience what that's like, and then become better drivers in our community. So I hope you'll join me for that Shine the Light visual and walk on October 25th at Lions Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now from District 3, our Mayor Protem, Andrea Marr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, this is in absolutely no order. I've had a couple of comments from folks that they have heard that the Shader Brothers at Fairview and Baker is Fairview and Baker, is like the council somehow kicking them out or something. That is not true. There is nothing happening with the Stater Brothers. Don't read everything you can read on the, or you see on the internet. I don't know where that's coming from, but it is not true. On the other hand, we've had a couple of great meetings with Northgate recently. October of next year is when the Northgate at the old Albertson's is slated to open on Wilson and Harbor. Really, really exciting concepts for what they've got working there. And I don't know, I imagine I'm going to be biking or scooting there on a regular basis because it's basically everything you could ever want, from carne asada to tacos and beer. So, very excited for that to open, ignore almost everything else on the internet. Regarding parks and the $10 million, I had a conversation with the city manager about that earlier this week. I'm going to pass that to her during her council comments to respond to. Thank you, Commissioner Viva, for mentioning the scam. I actually think talking about these things and the scams that we hear about, read about, experience, or that our family members experience is sort of how we make people more aware that they're out there. The whole credit card debit scam thing, I was hardly aware of until somebody I knew fell for it and ended up going to buy a bunch of gift cards for some reason. So, you know, if things like that are happening in the community, like please do come and share it with us. I think giving a public exposure to the fact that that stuff's going on in the community is the best way to defeat it, actually, and make sure people aren't falling for it. Thank you to Ms. Walls for talking about the Animal Services Committee and sending us an email earlier this week. I don't know what's all, or maybe that was last week, but I have started doing a deep dive on it. I appreciate the input and the concern that you've shown there. I'd like to look into that a little bit more, for sure. I don't have all of my facts yet, so I'm not going to comment on it quite yet. I attended a meeting about a week ago for the Flying Leatherneck Museum. So, for those of you who aren't aware, there is a fantastic little museum that's currently at Marine Corps Station Miramar. It's a, all of the old aircraft that the Marine Corps has ever used get fixed up and put in an airfield there. And then there's like a cute exhibit about kind of the history of Marine Corps aviation. They're getting kicked out of Miramar. And so, they're looking for a home and apparently the El Toro hangar might be available according to the city of Irvine. And so, a bunch of, you know, a bunch of marine aviators were working together to try to figure out how to make that work. So, it was actually, it was really fun. My best friend from the Naval Academy is a Marine Corps test pilot, and so I was texting him that I'm going to this meeting. And it would be really cool if that moved to El Toro. They're looking for ways to integrate with Heroes Hall, with the surrounding veterans community, with cities in the area. They're, you know, they're all from San Diego, so they don't know anything about Orange County or the veteran community here. And so, I was really excited to partner up with them and see ways in which we can celebrate aviation and Marine Corps aviation in particular. Part of their mission also, though, is about kids in STEM. And you don't really get into aviation, I'm looking at Mr. Garcia over there, you don't really get into aviation or aeronautics unless you kind of think math and science is cool. So, very, very excited to welcome them to Orange County. Bonnie Matthews, artist at the Senior Center right now, her exhibit is still up, so I encourage you to go if you just need a break from politics and just want to see something cute and fun. She has this really amazing cartoon artwork. I do want to, it's like what I said, nothing is in order here. It's just spread out on my notes. In Sacramento, there was also a bill passed related to speed limits, the extent to which cities can actually lower speed limits. So, that's something I'm really interested in looking into more, following on this biking and walking theme for the month, to the extent that we can just post lower speed limits in the city, which is actually weirdly something we weren't allowed to independently do as a city, but now we can to some extent. I'd like to see us look for all of the ways in which we can slow cars down. I was going to maybe talk about the LA City Council, but I'll save that one, just absolutely disgusting. But I'll end on a happy note. It was Santa Bob's birthday last week, so I'm not going to make everyone sing "Happy Birthday," but if you see him, give him a punch on the shoulder for me. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, for my part, I just have a few things. So, last week, I attended and eulogized Lieutenant Jerry Hildeman, who we adjourned the meeting for last, at our last meeting. Also, the city manager, Loriann Farrell Harrison, and the police chief, Ron Lawrence, eulogized him as well as his family. It was a beautiful service. It's tragic that he died at such a young age. He lived a really full life. Amazing. He lived a wonderful life. But it was great to see so many people from the police department, so many people from the city staff, and it was a real tribute to him. And we're definitely going to miss him, and so I was glad to be able to attend that. Dave Min is going to have a town hall on October 29th at 2:00 PM. It's for the whole district, but it's going to be right here at the Norba Herzog Community Center. So, it's sorry, 2:30, I think I said 2:00 PM. It's 2:30 on October 29th. So, I hope you can all go to that. Thank you, Ms. Walls, for raising this issue about the Animal Services Committee. I just got, I just appointed myself as the liaison to the Animal Services Committee, so I'm back. And I really, I need, I need all this information. I know you said that you've provided it. I don't have it, and I'm sure it's my failing. We're going to meet in person. We're going to get down to the bottom of this. I'm going to read every single word that you've sent to everybody and staff. I'm going to get a full briefing from everyone, just like the good old days or the bad old days with Dr. B. So, we're going to get to the bottom of it and we're going to make it good. I take a lot of, you know, personal accountability for that program because that's a program that I was very involved in creating back in, I guess it was 2018. So, we'll get it back on track. It's just going to require some work and some time and some good hard analysis and advocacy. Okay, so there's that. In terms of the parks and the Dave Min money and the Cotty Petrie Norris money for catch them libel, on the one hand, it's my understanding that nothing's going to move forward unless we vote on it. On the other stand, on the other hand, this council votes on it. On the other hand, I really understand the confusion that's out there in the public about what's happening with that money. And so, I definitely support any effort to provide sunshine on where the money, how did we get the money? What is it allocated to? To what extent do we have discretion over how the money is spent? And then how is that money, how is that going to be exercised? And how can the community come in and exercise their right to help us and give us feedback about how the money is going to be spent to the extent that we have the discretion? So, I know that the staff is working on that. I think we're going to hear some words from our city manager on what the status of that is, but definitely we need to be fully transparent about that. But I, and very grateful to Senator Min and Assemblymember Petrie Norris because it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to, however it happens, it's going to greatly improve our parks. Okay, so, and then the final thing I says, I have to say is, thank you, Councilmember Reynolds. Thank you for everyone who spoke in favor of the resolution to support the women in Iran. And we're going to move forward with something at our next meeting, but in the meantime, we'll get an out, we'll get a proclamation out there in some form and fashion through press release or whatever. It's in the works. We just couldn't quite get it done by the deadline of this meeting, but we won't wait until the next meeting, but we'll have some type of a public presentation at our next meeting. That's all I have, and so I'm going to turn it over for the city manager to report to Ms. Farrell Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening to our esteemed public and everyone who's watching online. I just have a couple of updates for you this evening on a variety of topics, including some that have come up during public comment this evening and from the dais. First, I wanted to start with thanking the incredible team of individuals that we have in our code enforcement operation. Last week was Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and I just wanted to remind everyone that our code enforcement officers work in tandem with development services, of course, with our public work staff, but also very heavily involved with our community policing operations and the police department, making sure that, you know, residents, businesses, and the public is adhering to our codes. This is a team of very dedicated people. They work around the clock, some of them even reporting to work as early as 3:00 in the morning to make sure that our city is responsive, that we have high quality of services, and they're just an incredible, indefatigable, I think is the word, team. And so, just wanted to give them a shout out for the great work that they do. We've been able to expand the number of code enforcement officers as well, due to your great leadership, you know, understanding the responsiveness that we need for our businesses and residents, and just very heartfelt thanks on behalf of everybody to this incredible team of officers that often have to deal with very difficult situations. They're not sworn officers, and so their tools are a little bit more limited, obviously, but they certainly do a lot of work to make sure that Costa Mesa is a great place to live, work, and play. And so, thank you to all of our code enforcement officers. I wanted to talk about a few other things, including the ceremony that was mentioned already on the dais with the Orange County Model Engineers. We'll be really happy to host a bridge dedication on Monday, October 25th at 10:00 AM with them to celebrate the completion of the rebuilt train trestle. That's going to be very exciting. It's going to be held at Goat Hill Junction on the east end of Fairview Park, and so we invite the public to join us for this exciting event. It's always great when we get to improve the amenities at Fairview Park, but of course, with Goat Hill Junction and the work of the Orange County Model Engineers. So, please join us Tuesday, the 25th at 10:00. We also have our Costa Mesa Fire and Rescue Department conducting their annual open house, and so we're really excited about that. That's open to the community. It's a great free event and all are welcome. So, come out and meet our great firefighters, learn about the fire service, participate in simulated firefighting drills and other fun activities, see live fire demonstrations, and learn how our fire department runs their calls. The event will be held on Saturday, the 22nd from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's this Saturday coming up at Fire Station Number Four located at 2300 Placentia Ave. There's free parking at Estancia High School. We hope you will all come out. I actually saw that Huntington Beach had their open house last weekend, and so I saw that as I was driving about, and so it's a great time for us to show our appreciation to the dedicated men and women of our fire service, especially here in Costa Mesa. Please bring your families. It's going to be a great time, and so hopefully we'll see you all on Saturday. And then we have our Shine the Light event. As John mentioned, we are really trying to highlight domestic violence awareness. As you know, this is an issue that is still pervasive and prevalent. We will be joining with the police department and human options to hold a walking vigil on Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Lyons Park Event Lawn. Please join us for this event as well. Anyone that you may know that's in need of services or might be at risk, please invite them to join us at this event, and hopefully we can provide some services. And then I wanted to mention the great work of our staff, including city manager's office staff, also our police department, public works, everybody who's involved in our government programs that deal with the very challenging issue of homelessness. And so, I just wanted to give you some brief information on some recent successes that we've had. I know that we can always do more. Costa Mesa is unique in terms of its level of dedication to this issue. We have street outreach teams, we have caseworkers, we run our own bridge shelter that's very active. We have contracts with outside organizations, including Trellis, also with CityNet to expand our outreach services and to provide a whole plethora of services and activities to help people move from being unhoused to permanent housing. As of right now, I'm really pleased to inform everyone that we've housed 243 people, and this is a huge success. I mean, we have literally provided housing for hundreds of individuals. I did want to highlight one particular personal story. We'll call him Mr. H., just out of respect for his privacy. He was on and off the streets of Costa Mesa and Newport since 2017, and so for, you know, over five years here. And after repeated attempts by our outreach workers, Mr. H. finally did agree to enter our bridge shelter, where he improved, you know, many of the conditions that he was suffering from that were contributing to him being unhoused. We found him permanent housing, and he's looking forward to moving to his new home. Congratulations to him, and thank you to our team for helping him have a better life. We're actually changing people's lives one by one every day. I know that there are still many people in need of help. I know that there's more that can always be done. We are certainly trying our very best to make sure that anyone that is open to receiving services will be receiving services. And so, I just wanted to give an example of just one individual that we've helped. We have housed 240 people since April of 2019, when the shelter opened its doors. We're very, very proud of that. And we're one of the few cities in Orange County that actually had a reduction in its homelessness count during the last point in time count that was conducted by the county, and we've reduced homelessness by 20%. I know many cities that have had an uptick and didn't have that kind of success. Again, thank you to the leadership of this council. We're happy that we have a shelter where we can actually provide services and that we actually have street outreach teams that get to know individuals and work with them, and they don't give up. This was a five-year relationship, as you can see. And so, again, I know that, you know, often we feel like we're not doing enough, but we are doing our best to help one person at a time get into a much better place, get permanently housed, deal with some of the underlying issues that contributed to the situation that they're currently in, understanding that with compassion and with services, we can actually get people to a much better place. And so, this is just one small example of that. And then I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that we heard on the floor. I'll address the Animal Services one first. And so, I am involved in this personally. I am meeting with and engaging with Jason and of course, his team and our Parks and Community Services Department on both contracts that we have, as it relates to animal services with both Price's Pets and with the Newport Animal Hospital. I will share that, you know, we're getting into the details. We'll come back to council with some options for consideration. I feel very strongly that our decisions need to be data-driven and fact-based, and so I will be doing that analysis and that review along with staff, and we'll come back to you with some recommendations. And so, I'm getting in the weeds on that one, if you will. And so, more on that to follow. And regarding the issue of the Min money, as we've been calling it, this is a spectacular situation to be in. It's a little difficult to hear kind of the frustration around it because it being state money, these things take time from the state to actually coordinate with us and the use of the funds. And so, having worked at the state, I expected that. I used to work for the state of New York for five years, and so I know how with large budgets and a very complicated system, usually it takes a little while for them to get in touch with the local government on how they want to proceed. And so, we received that phone call on October 11th. And so, while we were celebrating in June with Senator Min for his enormous support for our city, which is historic and unparalleled and precedented, the budget wasn't adopted or effective until July, obviously, and then they didn't reach out to us until October. From the Parks Department to start the conversation, they have a lot they need to do on their end, setting up the account strings, the codes and all of that to arrange for the reimbursement. It's a process. We will absolutely be having discussions internally regarding the projects that are eligible and the ones that were in our CIP and our five-year plan and how we could potentially fund that. We will absolutely be having these discussions with PACs. We would love to get that feedback. It will absolutely and should also be coordinated with the open space master plan, and of course, we can't spend anything over $100,000 without your approval, so that wouldn't happen under any circumstance. And so, the process will be open, it will be transparent, it will be fun. We should be celebrating this. We will celebrate this. This is a good thing. I don't want for anyone to feel that there's going to be closed-door discussions about the 10 million. We have a lot of needs and we absolutely need feedback and direction for us to implement which different projects. We will ultimately use this money for We will, um, ultimately, um, use this money for, in concert with the other funds that we have and how to leverage that the best way. So we'll be developing those recommendations for you and, uh, bring that forward. In a study session format would be great. It's a good format to give you options and different considerations with different funding streams attached, um, and the five-year plan. And so, I need to have that deep review with staff. We'll have a conversation with the state November 1st is scheduled for, I believe. And, um, with, with the Parks Department at the state, they'll give us some feedback on their priorities and then we'll bring that forward. But we, this will not be a mysterious process. This is an exciting, um, place to be for us and it's unprecedented and can't wait to have the conversation with you about the options. I can tell you that it's, uh, we have more need than even the 10 million, but for certain, we're going to be very happy to bring forward different options for you on the 10 million. And, um, the public will be very heavily involved in that process, too. And so, more to follow there. And then just one last thing on, on state funding. Sometimes there are supplantation requirements. And so, some of the public comment was about if we had funding for something, then now we have the state money, we can move it to something else. Um, we need to understand all the grant requirements. That's not often something that can be done, but we'll look to see what the opportunities are once we engage further with the Parks Department. But, um, oftentimes you can't, um, relieve your contribution necessarily, one for one. So we'll have great conversations with the state. We'll relay all that information. We'll involve our commissions and committees accordingly and then bring you recommendations. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, City Attorney Report, Ms. Barlow.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Are you sure?
Well, I'd like to win the bet and have the meeting be over, but no. Yes, I'm sure. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Consent calendar, uh, all these items, one through seven, will be approved in one motion unless they are pulled by any member of the public or council member or any staff member. Um, I have to recuse myself from number three, just note it on the record because of a political contribution I received. So, um, my vote doesn't count for that. So let's do, uh, um, let's get a motion on that one. All right, anything pulled? Anything pulled, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Good stuff. Motion by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Let's call for the question on the consent calendar.
Motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. All right. So now we move to our one and only item. It's a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Just one minute, Mr. Mayor. This item is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, mending Title V and Title VII of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code by adopting the 2022 additions of the California Building Standards Code and related model codes with appendices and amendments thereto and repealing the adoption of 2019 additions of the California Codes and Amendments thereto with the effective date of January 1st, 2023. Presentation by John Neal Fire Marshal and Ziad Doudar, building official. Thank you.
Gentlemen, your PowerPoint is locked and loaded. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens. Good evening, City Council Members, and good evening to all. Uh, I'm Ziad Doudar, the building official for the City of Costa Mesa. I'm here today with, uh, our Fire Marshal, Mr. John Neal. And we are here today to present to you the adoption of the new 2022 California Building Codes. And we are, these codes will be in effect and will become effective as of January the 1st, uh, 2023, and they become enforceable at that date. Uh, we are also proposing some amendments to the new building code addition, which are deemed to be necessary due to our climatic and geographical and topographical conditions in the City of Costa Mesa as it is outlined in the resolution on page two. So with that said, this is a little background about the adoption process for the California Building Codes. The California Health and Safety Code, Section 17958 mandates that the California Building Standards Commission adopt and publish the California Building Standard Codes, Title 24 California Code of Regulation, every three years. The 2022 California Building Codes have been adopted and published by the state and will become effective as of January 1st, 2023, as it is pointed out in my staff report on page one. The California Health and Safety Code requires local government to adopt the most updated state codes and allows local agencies to make amendments to those codes to respond to local conditions. And the California Building Standard Codes and Reference Model Codes, basically, the California Building Standard Codes are based on the model codes, the international building codes as we know it. And here are the, all the California Building Codes and the reference codes that are based So staff are recommending that the City Council adopt the 2022 State Construction Codes with the local amendments to the following building codes. 2022 California Building Code, 2022 California Residential Code, 2022 California Fire Code. These amendments and changes are necessary due to local climatic, geographical, and topographic conditions such as San Ana winds and seismic conditions in Southern California. The draft resolution sets forth the required findings for those proposed amendments. The local amendments to the state codes, the Development Services Department is recommending amendments to the 2022 California Building and Residential Codes. For example, here are some examples about fencing less than six feet in height, swimming pools of 18 inches or less in depth, and the detached decks below 200 square feet in area do not require a building permit. Roof coverings are required to be of Class B material minimum. Fire retardant treated woods and shingles must comply with the state standards. And here are some local amendments to the state codes for the fire department to be presented by John Neal.
Good evening. So here we have highlighted just, uh, a few of the codes, uh, our existing codes that we've maintained. Uh, this is a thoughtful process that we do. We revisit them every three years. So we ensure that they, uh, are carrying over year over year and that the codes have not caught up with our amendments that we've had in the past. So the, what we're maintaining here, as Ziad noted, was our red flag conditions, our restrictions on outdoor fires during those red flag conditions, updates to include our reference standards for the temporary retail sale of safe and sane fireworks. So it's really just transparency for those fireworks booth operators, that they understand the national standard that, that's associated with that amendment. And then we're maintaining our modifications to fire sprinkler installation standards where required. And that process really goes through, uh, you know, we do a countywide approach with the Fire Marshals leading up to this for, for the past six months. We've been meeting, discussing what works countywide. And then we also include our, our city or local specific amendments that, that you're seeing tonight here. So, uh, the new, uh, and emerging stuff that we're seeing is, is really highlighted on energy storage systems. Um, that chapter went from, you know, I think it was three pages to 15 pages. So we've seen quite a bit with emerging technologies and really the code is just, uh, a base framework to get, uh, a safe installation or a prescriptive standard for that installation. So, uh, that's something we've monitored and we have, we have just a few amendments in that chapter, as well as, uh, just updates for our fire department connection proximity to hydrants. And that's, uh, really just in association with the NFPA standard and making sure that, that what we had in our pass code matches that, that baseline standard there. So.
So with that said, the ordinance adoption, the draft ordinance amends the City of Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Title V, Dealing with Buildings and Construction, Section 5-1, the adopted construction codes or the California Building Codes, Section 5-1.1, Amendments to the 2022 California Building Code, Section 5-1.3, Amendments to the 2022 California Residential Code. And Title VII for the Fire Protection and Prevention, Section 7-14, Adoption of the California Building Co- Fire Codes, Section 7-15, Amendments to 2022 California Fire So the staff recommends the City Council hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution setting forth findings with respect to climatic, geographic, and topographic conditions to allow local amendments to the state codes and to introduce the first, for the first reading, the ordinance to amend Title V and Title VII of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, adopting the 2022 edition of the state building standard codes as locally amended and the current edition of the Orange County Grading and Excavation Code.
Mr. Mayor, uh, in addition, I do have one update to the resolution that I would like to propose to include, uh, chapters 57, 58, and 80 on page four of the resolution. And that is as referenced in the attached ordinances. So it's already included in the ordinances. It's just for, uh, clarification to ensure that we add chapters 57, 58, and 80, uh, by reference on page four.
On page four of what it, what it's, that's attachment two.
Page four of the resolution.
All right.
It has a list of the chapters in the California Fire Code and it stops at 56 when it should have continued to 57, 58, and Chapter 80 as amended and proposed in the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, I see. Four. That's, uh, attachment one. Okay.
Thank you.
So if the City Council gives first reading this evening, the ordinance will be agendized for a second hearing. If approved at second hearing, the ordinance will become effective as of January 1st, 2023. Uh, thank you, and we welcome any questions or inquiries that you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
So, Mr. Neal, can I just understand, so we added, we changed the language saying you've got to have a disconnect for storage within line of sight. If it's not within line of sight, then you got to have placards. And we changed that to 36 inches just for our city?
Yes. So this is something, uh, our Fire Marshals group has discussed. Now, the other Fire Marshals have not, are, have not completed their adoption at this point, so I, I can't give an exact list of where it's landed at the other cities. But we've run into similar issues. So what it is, is the, the electrical code requires about a five-by-four inch placard with a diagram of the building, um, that would indicate where the electrical energy storage system shutdown would be located. And so, that could be on the inside of a building. There's no reflective properties to that placard. There's nothing other than a diagram that's there. So at night, our first responders have no idea that there's a placard there. They just know shut down all of the main disconnects on the elec-, on the electrical systems. And so, for them, it's difficult to understand where they need to go to shut down the energy storage system. And they don't understand necessarily that there is power that's been turned on to the building when they've secured that electrical service. So this adds an easy button, if you will, right next to the electrical, main electrical disconnect that they can see visually that's there. And we've already worked with many of our, uh, energy storage system submitters at this point, and they're proactively putting it on their plans so that it's there. This is just for consistency and will allow us to update our guideline for all installations going forward. So it's something we felt was important for our first responders, especially as you get into commercial buildings. What we're seeing is it, it could be in a room within the middle of the building. So on a square diagram on a, a four-by-five inch placard, it's very difficult for them to understand where they need to go to shut that, that additional electrical system down.
I mean, 36 inches is not a lot of room to have multiple disconnects. Like I'm trying to, you know, but, so how many, uh, storage system providers or applications do we have in the works when you say we're working with all of everyone who's submitting? How, how many folks is that?
So I, I don't have an exact number of how many we've had, um, but it's been a, a standard comment that we've had, uh, basically just saying, we need additional information for what you're providing here. The, the labeling was not providing an adequate response and the industry actually asked that we have a standard.
Okay.
There's, but we have not had issues meeting the current standard with the disconnect at this point.
Yeah. I mean, that's not uncommon, right? Is to have a placard that indicates that like, hey, there's something else you should be aware of when you're at the, at the disconnect, oh, Fire Chief's coming up. Uh-oh. Go for it. Can you turn it, it's like? The chief wants to talk.
Oh, chief wants to talk. Hold on one second. You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Member Pro Tem, members of the council. I was just going to add, yeah, this is bottom line, this is directly related to firefighter safety. Um, and it's something that we've seen for a while that's, that's been out there when we talk about the electric storage, uh, unit. So I just wanted that to be noted. The other piece that, that needs to be noted, we also reached out to a number of stakeholders as Fire Marshal Neal, uh, indicated, as well as the BIA. We sat down with the BIA as well. But this is entirely a firefighter safety issue. I just wanted to emphasize that piece.
Is this required for solar? Do you have to have the solar disconnect next to the main electrical disconnect?
Yes, yes, you do.
It's within line of sight, isn't it, though? I know it's not, there's no 36-inch requirement?
There is a three-foot requirement.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, oh, Councilmember Harlow.
I just have one question. It's more general. Is, is there, it's not in these amendments, but is there, uh, a provision in the building code that allows for, um, deviations or modifications provided you meet certain criteria?
Absolutely. Uh, the, the customer has always, uh, uh, he has the right to, to appeal any decision that's rendered by the building official or any interpretation within the, the California Building Codes, uh, by providing an alternate method and material that should be equivalent or exceed the safety levels that are prescribed in the building code.
And is that a, a formal appeal or is that just a informal conversation?
That, that should be a formal appeal and application to submit for an alternate method and material.
And then who, who, uh, governs that appeal?
Uh, the building official in conjunction with the fire state, the, the fire, the Fire Marshal.
Okay. And then just again, out of curiosity, are we seeing a lot of requests for these kinds of appeals?
As far as I know, I have seen only one, uh, alternate method and material that was submitted since I have perceived my post as a building official.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to open up to the public. So we'll open up public comments. Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, council. Um, I'm going to make sure it's abundantly clear. I have no expertise on building codes, but I, I think this is an opportunity to understand, um, how we're building, what we're building specifically. And so, I specifically want to talk about environmentally conscious building and, um, really specifically building electrification. You know, it's one of the few things that we can do on a local level to address climate change is to have fully electrified buildings. And what that means, if it's not totally clear, is that means there would be heat pumps instead of gas heaters in a, in a home. Means that there would be induction stove tops instead of gas stove tops. And, um, it would be, uh, air fryers on a large air fryer, I guess, what you call actually, um, an induction oven or a convection oven instead of a gas-powered oven. And so, these are some of the, the, one of the primary things we can do to remove natural gas from our homes. And I really would encourage council to think about having an electrification requirement and joining the myriad of other cities within California that are doing the same thing, um, within its codes. Um, so that's like really the bulk. Like if you, if you only had one takeaway from what I had to say, I would say that's the bulk of it. But, but I also just, um, quickly also comment on, you know, how do we create happy communities, like within our code? And so, I've always said, so I lived in, I lived in, I live in Santa Barbara, loud college town, parties all the time, right? And, um, a lot of people didn't like living there because you'd hear, you know, party music blaring all the time because it was, you know, a college town, right? And I just was always. And I just was always convinced that had those buildings been built with, like, proper sound insulation and some thick windows, it was the best place in the world to live. You know, I was lucky enough to be a deep sleeper, but not everyone else was. And so I would also encourage, you know, kind of a look at that, like, what can we require to have happier neighbors for each other, especially as we potentially see more development through Costa Mesa, through Measure K or the builder's remedy, which could happen any day now? The last thing I'll say is there's a lot of interest on the state level for something called single staircase reform, if people are familiar with that. If you're not, basically what it is is you can't really have thin apartment buildings in California because it requires two stairwells, according to the fire code, essentially. And this is really a relic from times when fires used to be a lot more devastating in our buildings. And so there is a lot of interest in creating a reform process so you could allow just a single staircase within a, you know, a thin apartment building, for an example, which significantly reduces the cost, the land area associated, and increases the likelihood of being able to build a, like, kind of maybe a six-story apartment, you know, but on the size of half of the Taco Mesa lot, you know, something really thin like that. So those are all the things I just wanted to put on your radar. So thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak on this item. Is there anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Shocking, okay. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll entertain a motion on this item. Councilmember Harland, you're the big winner. And, well, assuming that you're going to move to approve, I guess, you've got a second already in the bag, so. Go ahead.
I moved to approve.
Okay. And just to be clear, that includes the amendment that was proposed by?
The clarification, yes.
Mr. Neal, okay, good stuff. And so do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I do not.
Excellent. Councilmember Reynolds, do you have anything to say with respect to your second? Well done, okay, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
All right, everyone's going to kill me for prolonging this council meeting. But I guess, I mean, I agree with the speaker about electrification. I think that we've got an opportunity with a number of sites right now who are battery storage providers. We're sort of on the brink of this revolution in California in terms of clean energy. I, you know, I think we need to spend a little more time thinking specifically about how that integrates with our existing building stock. And so, I mean, I'd like to, I agree with everything except the battery storage provision, but then that, like, led to a rabbit hole of other questions that I just thought of. So I'd like to propose a substitute motion that includes all the stock recommendations with the exception of the portion related to energy storage. See if I get a second.
Second for discussion. Walk me through that rabbit hole. Explain to me why that's a concern for you in a way that I can understand, that I can support, and follow suit with your motion.
Yeah, so if you're talking about existing, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Fire Marshal, if you're talking about existing building stock, you don't always have the option of doing a full renovation on the existing electrical system or the big electrical panel where the main disconnect for the building is. And so we're potentially ruling out opportunities to install energy storage systems in older buildings where you don't have the opportunity to make that upgrade without significant expense. And I understand the safety concern, but I, you know, the code hasn't gone back and updated all the old solar installations. They just have a big, giant flashy plaque that says, there's solar on the roof, there might be live power. I, you know, I've seen dozens of those. So, I mean, I think maybe we can make the sign bigger or more obnoxious or something. But I don't want to rule out the potential to put in new technology in older buildings just because, you know, we might have to say, like, go to the room next door for the extra disconnect. That's kind of where my head's at. But tell me why I'm wrong, please.
So what we're seeing on current installations is that the, it's basically conduit that's running to the button that's going to be the emergency shutdown. They aren't relocating the batteries, if you will. So the batteries are located remotely in a different area of the building or on the exterior of the building or on the other side. And this is a piece of conduit that's running to a button that then goes back to that disconnect between the sub-panel and the main panel that shuts down, that doesn't. So it doesn't stop the batteries from being energized. It just stops the energy from going to the sub-panel to then power the building again or the conduit that's running through the building. So it's just a separate disconnect, just like the solar disconnect is located at the main panel, but doesn't. So there's a section of electricity going from the solar panel to that disconnect always, but it's not then transferring to the building. So it's just a point of disconnect. So it's, I haven't seen an installation that's impacted where the batteries would be able to go on an existing building.
I wasn't suggesting where the batteries were. I was suggesting whether there's room in older electrical panels to necessarily stick a disconnect right there. Sometimes it's around the corner. Sometimes it's in the same electrical room, but like, next to the transformer. It's, the 36 inches seems very limiting. That's what I was getting at.
From, I think it's doable after you provide all the safety provisions because the bottom line is we're trying to save the residents and the community. So everything is possible in engineering except if you provide the proper measures and the safety measures to implement what you are proposing in an existing building. To keep it, for example, you can upgrade that panel, but provide an enclosure, a controlled area where if, in case of a hazard, that area is controlled and gives the fire department an ample time to respond to that level of hazard. But it is feasible. We can upgrade the existing buildings to accommodate all these energy, new energy systems. And considering the technology and the rapid movement of this technology, I mean, we are, the interesting thing about the energy systems today in the new building code is like it strikes five different codes simultaneously. The building code, the fire code, the electrical code, and the mechanical code. All these codes are impacted by this rapid-moving technology of the energy storing systems. But it's doable.
I guess I would just like to see us embrace that a little bit more and figure out how are we making it easier? What's our plan to encourage folks to use the technology? I think it's much easier to say, like, well, in the name of safety, we're going to make it like as hard as possible for people to, like, get new things together, right? And that's, that shouldn't be our approach.
Yes, that's top priority for us to just to provide the minimum safety measures required to make sure that all the safety provisions are implemented in the plan just to protect our community and our residents from any potential hazard.
Understood.
Okay, so did she convince you on the second? Or is it, are we going to, we're going to vote on? We don't have a substitute motion yet on the board. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're hurting anything by pulling one red line off and taking another look at it, but.
Is, looking at the, I think it's page 18. Is that section 1207.4.1? Is that what you're referring to?
So it's, yeah, it's two separate sections there. One is commercial installations, which is the 1207.4.1. And then the 1207.11.5.1 is in R3 and R4, which is single-family and smaller multifamily residential.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, does the proposed code language not meet what your, the practical?
It strikes me as potentially restrictive on the commercial side specifically.
Okay, so get me to it. You'd say, it's, what, first of all, let's start with, what attachment are we looking at?
Sorry.
Last one.
I'm looking at, yeah, the redlined version.
Oh, you're looking at the redlined version. And then there are pages at the bottom. What page are you looking at?
Page 18 of Attachment 3.
Page 18 of Attachment 3. Okay. Now, 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 now what? Now it says electric disconnects? Okay.
So the top section is in the commercial area of energy storage systems, the 1207.4.1. And then the lower section is in residential installations. The new code breaks it out into two separate areas of the code.
So Mayor Protem, does the, does the redlined language, is that preferred to the code, the proposed?
Yeah, the one that references the California Electrical Code, yeah. That way, if there's changes to the California Electrical Code, it'll be incorporated by adoption as opposed to us having our own standard, right? I'm fine with coming back and looking at it, too. I mean, if you've got other, if we've got other things we want to do in terms of, they're conferring.
Well, part, part of the reason I asked the question about the amendment process or modification was whether, not for the specific purpose, but whether something like this could be appealed by an applicant if there was some practical difficulty. So is that possible for this section?
Yes, it is. Anything can be, can be appealed and contest the building code provisions, but you need to provide an equivalent type of facilitation to maintain that level of safety needed for, in the building code. But you can, you can appeal any provision in the building code provided that you provide adequate safety measures that can meet the spirit and the intent of the building code.
May I ask a question? So the first sentence that is stricken incorporates by reference the California Electrical Code, okay? So then the second sentence is added, which says the disconnected means shall be within 36 inches of the main electrical service disconnecting means. I think I understand most of those words. How is that different than the California Electrical Code that's incorporated by the first sentence, which is stricken? What, if anything, does that say about the distance between the disconnecting means and the?
It says where it's not within line of sight, that they, they, that placards or directories shall be installed at the main electrical location, which then gives the, you know, it's up for interpretation. So a lot of what we see is it's going to be a back and forth and plan check because it's going to be a question of the directory they're providing. It doesn't provide enough information to guide us to where it needs to go. So it may get through plan check. We go to do an inspection at the site. And at the site, it's going to be the call of the inspector to verify, do I know how to get to where that location is at based on the placard or directory that's provided, which then requires another inspection, installation by the contractor, and it's back and forth. So what we found is this standard, and again, it was, this was working with a particular company that was providing a lot of submittals, and they wanted expedited plan check. They wanted to go through in one swoop, and they wanted to have a standard installation. And so that's really where we came up with this 36-inch, was that it provided an easier installation and a standard installation for a company that was there. And it became what we were using as our standard here. So I think as Ziad noted, you know, there's always an alternate means or method if it's, the button is located just outside of the main electrical room that says energy storage system shutdown as we approach the main electrical room disconnect. You know, does that provide us the same shutdown? If it's this installation that just could not be within 36 inches of the panel? I think there's always those alternate options that are there. But to have the minimum requirement to be within 36 inches is what we have found to be best in, you know, the standard installation that we've found.
And is that something that's standard in the industry or just something that's specific to Costa Mesa?
It's specific to Costa Mesa. It's, again, at the, in our Orange County Fire Marshals Group, it's something we've discussed. Now, I don't, because all the counties haven't gotten through this process, you know, all these cities and agencies haven't got through this process, I can't speak to who's adopted it at this point. But it's, it's what we've found to be a standard in a majority of installations that's an adequate amount of space to provide the clearance.
Okay. And Chief, you stood up and, I mean, I gave you the mic, and you said that this is really important for firefighter safety. And so why is, do you think the words that are incorporated from the California Electric Code create a safety risk for our firefighters?
Not a safety risk, but I think as John said, it makes it, it makes it very clear. It obviously is very helpful for us to have it there. When we have reached out to the stakeholders as we do in this process, both building and fire, we front-load and make sure this is something that is palpable. And it's certainly something that both the industry and the BIA, there were absolutely no concerns with it moving forward. And as far as the Orange County Fire Marshals and that collective group, that's something that we will see other agencies move towards this as a new standard. Costa Mesa just happens to be moving forward and being proactive with it. We don't see any downside to making the change at this time. But again, as was also said, as it relates to the AM and M, the alternative method it means, that's always an option, you know, as well on the backside. I know we've spent a lot of time on this.
Well, that's what we do.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time.
I cut you off, Councilmember Harland.
No.
No, you're, you're done? Councilmember Chavez?
I think at this point, I'm just going to go with that. I'm not quite following what's going on, kind of best, too, but.
Okay, so this substitute motion dies for lack of a second. So let's call for the question.
I was going to jump in with a second.
Okay. You're going to do the second?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll, I don't have the practical experience to know that this is, this is, could be an impediment, but I agree with the sentiment that we, you know, or at least that I, I share, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Mar's concerns about, you know, creating impediments to valuable energy storage projects. It may be more time. I mean, I think we have this coming back to the agenda, maybe some more time to finesse language or, you know, maybe there's some language that could, you know, create a preference for this 36 and maybe a shorter appeal process or alternative process. But again, I don't know, I don't know how much of an impediment it is. Mayor Protem Mar, you know, your company builds these projects. You probably have good outreach to companies or people who would know if, how much of an impediment this is. But I think it's worth exploring.
Okay, so we do get a second. So now, would you, do, so we've, we've got a second. We've got a motion, substitute motion.
Okay, let me do this.
Are you, so everything that, the original motion, except she wants to stick with? Just the first part.
Mayor, may I ask?
1207, hold on one second, 1207.4.1. The substitute motion is to not make those changes, correct? Correct? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second, correct? Second, correct? Yeah. Hold on one second, City Manager. Yes, Councilmember Harland?
So the, the section that's currently stricken, that would be replaced, is that, is that new code language, or is that?
That's the model code language.
But that's part of the new?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
City Manager.
I just had a question for staff that I'm hoping can help with the decision-making process for the council tonight, and it's something that I'm not clear on. And so if we, if we follow through with the Mayor Protam's recommendation, just help me feel more comfortable with how we would create a process internally as staff where we're consistent with the alternative means, methods, so that our inspectors are not giving different feedback to different businesses, we're being consistent in terms of, you know, all those other considerations. I'm just a little bit concerned about that because I hear about inconsistencies now. Just want to make sure that we have a consistent methodology for how we would be handling the alternatives.
We do have a, I'm sorry. We do have a procedure in place, Lori Ann, when it comes to the plan check. When a customer submits an alternate means and method, material and methods, we look at it, we study it, I confer with the fire marshal, we make sure all the safety provisions are properly implemented, and it meets the code, and then it may exceed the building code requirements. So we make sure the safety provisions are properly implemented on the plan, and then we depict and delineate this application with all the reporting onto the plan so the inspector is not deviating from the decisions that we had made during the plan review process with the engineers.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I think we were to the point where you were going to speak to your motion. If you wish.
I'm good.
You're good.
I've said enough.
She said enough. Second, do you wish to say anything further?
If you can spare.
Excellent. Okay, then let's vote on the substitute motion.
Motion carries 4-1 with Mayor Stevens voting no.
All right. Winner, winner. So we've got, so we're done?
Yep.
We're done. We don't have any more business.